It is officially called to order. We will start with our chaplain prayer and pledges. And today, we have Police Chaplain Art Mavrody here to lead us in both, I think. Thank you.
That's great. Well, God, we come before you with gratitude. We thank you for being a God of love who is now with us in this very room. You never leave us or forsake us. Your grace has brought us safe thus far, and your grace will lead us home, Lord. I thank you, God, for using your service on mayor, our city manager, our city staff, and our city council members. I give thanks for the way of service that they have chosen to take up on behalf of all of us here. May we lean on your everlasting arms this day. Amen.
Amen. Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
We have one proclamation this morning, and the first one is our Texas Women Veterans Day, so those in the audience, to help us celebrate, please come forward. June 12th, 2023 commemorates the 75th anniversary of the Women's Armed Services Integration Act, which was signed into law by President Harry S. Truman in 1948. Women have valiantly served in defense of our nation since its earliest days during the American Revolution. However, it wasn't until June 12th, 1948, that women were able to serve as regular members of the U.S. Armed Forces when the Women's Armed Services Integration Act was signed into law. Over 200,000 women served in U.S. Auxiliary Services in World War II, which led the way for full integration into the military after the war. In the decades since the Integration Act, women have served in ever-expanding combat and leadership roles, often overcoming ongoing gender discrimination to prove themselves as capable and talented soldiers, sailors, airmen, and Marines. In the 1970s, women were further integrated into the U.S. Armed Forces, finally allowed to serve in non-combat commanding roles and attend the military academies. In 2016, the ban on women in combat was lifted, allowing them to officially serve on the front lines, although they'd been there for over 200 years. Women have performed above and beyond in situations where their actions saved lives, changed the outcome of a war, or altered the course of history. Some have endured great hardships as prisoners of war, while many others sacrificed their lives. Texas has the largest population of women veterans in the United States at 190,366, who bravely sacrificed and put their lives on the line to defend our country. San Angelo is home to almost 5,000 veterans, of which 10% are women. Every day, we recognize, appreciate, and honor the service of all women veterans who have shown courage, commitment, and skill while serving and defending the United States and its people. Now, therefore, I, Brenda Gunter, Mayor of the City of San Angelo, Texas, here do proclaim June 12th, 2023, as Texas Women Veterans Day in San Angelo, Texas. Further be it known that citizens of San Angelo remember and honor those women who bravely volunteered to serve and those who women whom one day will serve.
So San Angelo is home to almost 500 women veterans, and we are just a small portion of the women that you come across every day and don't realize that we all have a part in the military. So we appreciate you coming out and helping us recognize Women Veterans Day.
We will now open the meeting up for public comment. Issues or concerns not on the regular agenda may be raised by the public at this time. Citizens should speak from the podium, address all comments to the Diaz, begin by stating their name and address or single-member district number, and limit their remarks to less than three minutes. Do we have people in the audience who'd like to speak today?
Good morning. Charlotte Anderson keeps San Angelo beautiful. I'm here today with Mr. Cash Coy. He's from Ms. Fluid's third-grade class, and he's also a member of the Cub Scouts PAC 22. And we're going to talk to you a little bit this morning about the results of our hazardous waste event. So Cash was at that event, and he's going to tell us about his experience as well. We do a survey at that event, and our survey this year was pretty much in tune with what it's been in the past, but our number-one topic of environmental priorities from about 68% of the people that attended our event picked recycling as number one, hazardous waste removal as number two, trash pickup as number three, children's education coming in at four, planting trees, five, and beautification, number six. So I'm really proud to get that survey. That helps us plan our activities and events for the coming year. We did service 225 vehicles with 28 different organizations, 59 volunteers with over 287 hours, which was over $9,000 value to the city. 10,491 pounds of hazardous waste, 3,100 bags were collected by Ella, who Saves the Oceans, 2,000 pounds of shredded documents, 150 pounds of cardboard, over 3,000 pounds of oil, and 2,500 pounds of electronics were all recycled. None of these items went to the landfill, so we're very proud of that. And some of our service providers actually provided their services for free. So Cash, come over here. I want you to tell them what you did at the hazardous waste event.
This year was my first year participating in the hazardous waste event. My family and I were the second people that caused the火灾. I was in charge of passing out the handout, these trash bags, and these really cool pens. The handout had the survey on it, and it also had directions on which stations were on the route. Trash bags are super good for cars. It keeps trash from going out the window or deading up your car. The pens were just cool.
Cash, thank you very much for all that you did.
Thank you, Cash. Appreciate it.
So Cash has been working with us since he was in second grade, and that was last year. He was one of the persons at our Don't Mess with Texas Trash Off. He was also working on his World Conservation Award through Cub Scouts, which he earned, and we were very proud to present them for their accomplishments. So this year, Cash was in third grade, and he asked his teacher, Ms. Fluid, to reach out to us to help them with their triage research projects. So we had a wonderful presentation for the third grade at Fort Concho, and they all became junior K-SAB ambassadors. And I think you remember, they were here for the Earth Day proclamation. But something that was really special that they made for me, I just got this at the end of the year, was this beautiful book, and it says, "ABC 26 Ways to Keep San Angelo Beautiful" by Ms. Fluid's third-grade class. So it's just spectacular. What these students did was they made a poetry, and it's a specialized A-A-B-B-C-C poem, similar to Shakespeare's Sonics, and we're really, really proud of their work. And then the book is beautifully illustrated with watercolor pictures for every alphabet letter. So I'm going to read one, and then I'll let Cash read his pages. And so this, this, here's the picture.
We're probably running short on time, so why don't we have Cash read?
Okay. All right, Cash.
Pull the microphone down.
Don't mess with San Angelo because San Angelo has laws. That Earth Day is every day. Don't drop trash because of laws. So don't you dare drop that trash. It will cost the mayor a lot of cash. In a flash, pick up trash and let's pick up trash, and no slipping and falling with a crash.
So that was one student, and then we'll let Cash read one of his. There you go.
Unusually Beautiful by Cash Coy. San Angelo is unusually beautiful. Happiness is usually plentiful. It is real that it's so nice. It is like the home of Christ. That's why you should keep it clean, you're able to do it in a breeze.
Well done. Yeah.
Thank you very much. We sure appreciate the opportunity to bring these activities and engagement to our classrooms, providing purposeful teamwork and community advocacy, and to take away treasures like this. We are going to have this book published with the pictures and the children's work.
Cash, would you make sure everyone in your class appreciates all the work and effort that went into making that book? Would you thank them for us? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Charlotte.
Mayor, I'd like to recognize that Cash Coy is a cool name.
Any further public comment?
Morning. Rocky Templin, single-member District 6. Last month at the city council, planning permits brought some fees forward to y'all, and then some of them were postponed until later. We didn't get no public comment last month on some of those fees. And the Development Task Force seems to be working good to some extent. On April 19th, we had one about these fees, but we did not receive all the documentation till about 5:00 the day before. So we hadn't had time to review any of those before that meeting. Since then, they came to council. Some of them were passed last month. I think some of them are coming back up in two weeks. We had a meeting on May 31st and gave them a little bit more input. They did not have any more input for us. They were asking for more input from us, and they didn't give us any. A lot of those fees, some of them, it's a lot of, just like the codes, it's a lot to go through. Some of them don't make sense. Some of them need to go up. They all need to go up on how they need to go up. COVID was, of course, a unique situation. In 18, y'all had passed some where you were going to go up in 19, 20, 21, 22. And of course, a lot of those got skipped because of COVID. And so a lot of those needed to still go forward, and they still do, but in some cases, they're jumping hundreds of percent. Some of the fees are several hundred percent, and some of them are even more than that. On some of them, the mileage seems to be off. One permit, one inspection, maybe 10 miles is fine, two, 20 miles is fine, but then you have four, which is 130 miles. Just some of the fees don't make sense, including in their cost analysis. We would just like staff to get with us a little bit before or get the information out as soon as they can to the Development Task Force meeting or the HBA, so that we can see it in advance, have time to go over it with the staff, and so that we're not coming to council presenting our case for or against when it could be come to a compromise before. On some of the...
Does there need to be another Development Task Force meeting called pretty soon so that you, in fact, have an opportunity to go back in, having the information in hand, have another meeting to discuss it, so you feel like everyone's reviewed it?
Well, if it's going to come to council on the 20th, I mean, we'd like to see it before, Monday, the day before. I just think they need to try to revamp it, and so, thank you.
Thank you, because I couldn't see the timer on the last public comment, so thank you. Further public comment?
Good morning, Council. Anna Bartas, 2236 River Valley Lane, single-member District 1. My question is, who was the appraiser for our county? Because obviously, it sounds like this person was from California, because they have absolutely no idea what our land values are worth. So the appraisal, I live in the city limits, and I'm paying taxes. The road in front of our house, I've lived there for 15 years. Nothing has ever been done to that road, and talking to neighbors who have lived there much longer have not seen anything done to that road also. So that's one concern. We are paying taxes. We have no sewer either, so we have our own septic. Anyway, there's that, and then my concern is pricing people out of their homes. Thank you.
Good morning, Council, staff. My name is Tony Jones, developer, single-member District 4. I'll not be here in two weeks. I'm sure, much to the cheer of some people, that we'll be here. I would just encourage Council to, in looking at the fees going forward, that you adopt a yearly tier that will incrementally raise the fees. You were provided with a thorough analysis from Mr. Templin two weeks ago, and that analysis revealed that there is a certain amount of smoke and mirrors that go on when staff brings you information. I've watched this go on for 20 or 25 years. It's not just this staff. Apparently, in order to get things done and get them done in a timely manner, they're rushed, and a lot of times, they can't provide us the information beforehand. But you must have, what I feel like is an unbiased look at those from a businessman's standpoint, and know that some of those numbers are skewed. So I would just encourage staff or Council to look at a tiered incremental raise in those fees. And so we appreciate staff doing for them, doing for us what they do. However, comma, we were at the last development meeting, hoping to see numbers, new numbers, from what you all looked at two weeks ago, and they had nothing in terms of the fees that were going to go up on us. They had some incremental fees that were going to go up on non-related issues, but they had nothing to provide us. And so now, we're faced with another council meeting where you are going to be asked to make those decisions, and we'll not have time to analyze those. Thank you very much.
We have to have those on the next council meeting, or can they be moved to July 6th?
We can move it, Mayor. Again, on our part, we definitely want to make sure staff is working closely with the community, but we can't move that. We'd prefer to have it at the next meeting, but we can...
All right, so we'll make a, we'll move it to July 6th, so it gives everybody more time to review all the information from both ends of the spectrum. More public comment? Now's your chance. With that, we will conclude the public comment section of the agenda, and we will move on to the consent agenda. I'm going to start with Lucy and ask if there's anything from the consent agenda she'd like to have pulled.
No, ma'am.
Larry?
No, ma'am.
Tommy?
No, ma'am.
Tom?
No, ma'am.
Harry?
Item D.
Item D? With that, may I?
You have Karen on.
Oh, Karen, did you want an item pulled from the consent agenda? No?
No, ma'am.
Thank you. All right, with that, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item D?
I'll move.
It's a move by Tommy, seconded by someone. Tom? Any public comment concerning the consent agenda with the exception of item D? Seeing none, we'll take a vote. Those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please say aye.
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 Okay, thanks, Karen. Motion approved, so the consent agenda is approved 7 to 0 with the exception of D. Item D, consider approving change order number 1 to ES-06-19EHT between M Protec, Hibbs &amp; Todd Incorporated in the City of San Angelo for Water Utilities Department Assistance up to the amount of $130,000. Shane, you're on. Lucy, do you have a question?
No, it was Harry.
Harry.
It's not a question, it's more of a comment. I guess I didn't realize that we'd lost another senior staff person. I'm going to have to piggyback on what Tommy said last budget meeting, and that is, we've got to find a way that we can retain these people and find a pay scale that allows us to hire the right people and retain the right people. So from my perspective, I'm a little disappointed that we've got positions out there...
Would you like something to comment on item D? Because that's not item D.
It has to do with item D. It has to do with that we've lost a position. That's why we're hiring this particular company. So my comment is that, and I'll move to approve the item.
Thank you. Is there a second? Wait a minute, Lucy.
Mayor, I wanted Shane to go ahead and actually tell us what item D is about, please.
Yes, we're going to use professional services from EHT to help assist in some of the daily reporting and things like that that we have to do for the water utility, a lot of the regulatory issues and items that come up on a weekly basis that we have to deal with. These folks are going to come in and help me work through all that, make sure all the numbers are calculated correctly, because we do go through a whole lot of numbers on a weekly basis when we're talking about reporting our water usage and all of those type of things. So these folks are going to come in and help make sure that we keep everything straight and in line and give me another set of eyes to help go through all of that.
Further questions for Shane? May I have a motion for approval? It's a move by Larry. They have it second.
Second.
Seconded by Tom. All those, any public comment? All those in favor of approving item D on the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion.
Aye.
Okay. Motion is approved, item D of 7 to 0. That concludes the consent agenda portion of the agenda. We will move into our regular agenda. Comments regarding items on the regular agenda may be made by the public when each item is discussed as outlined above. Applicants, proponents, and appallants are exempt from the time limit above and instead must limit their remarks to less than five minutes. Item A is consider ratifying COSA DC authorization for the board president to negotiate and execute Amendment 1 to the 2023 COSA DC Chamber of Commerce Professional Services Performance Agreement with ratification by City Council. Michael, you're on.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Michael Dane, interim Economic Development Director. Bringing before you an amendment to the existing ratification of a contract amendment between COSA DC and the Chamber of Commerce. This comes before you, consistent with the direction I received subsequent to the last meeting. We have simplified and clarified the scope. The direction I received afterward, or the suggestion I received afterward, was to extend the contract in a two-plus-one fashion. Remember, we talked about, it came to you last time with a three-plus-one-plus-one. Council was uncomfortable with that. There were really two viewpoints, a one-plus-one and a three. Subsequent to that, it was suggested to me that we discuss a two-plus-one. That's what we took to COSA DC. They took your advice or your request seriously and approved that, and sends that, they send that to you now in this item. So this would extend the current agreement by two years with an optional one-year extension, and of course, the ratification of this would also bring the new scope into play. So exactly as I think you directed last time.
Are there questions for Michael Dane? May I have a motion for approval?
I'll move.
It's a move by Harry. Seconded by Larry. Any public comment? Seeing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Karen? Thank you. Thank you. That motion passes 7-0. Item B, consider ratifying a COSA DC resolution authorizing the board president to negotiate and execute an economic development incentive agreement with Technology Tower LLC in an amount not to exceed $250,000. A project authorized under Sections 501 and 505 of the Texas Development Corporation Act Necessary to Promote Economic Development and Expand Business Enterprises Which Create or Retain Primary Jobs. Recommending approval by City Council and recommending City Council consider extending property tax abatements relative to the project.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Michael Dane, interim Economic Development Director. This incentive has to do with the Cytel Tower, kind of a local landmark. We have two local technology firms which have created an LLC to purchase, maintain, improve, maintain, and operate this tower. They will be moving their employees into the facility, and they plan to hire up to 20 additional employees. Our calculated estimated economic impact over 10 years is in excess of 59 million. The proposal includes $200,000 capital investment incentive, having to do with capital investment as they acquire and improve the facility. $50,000 job creation incentives to be tied to job creation. And our recommendation is that you would consider a tax abatement, which would be a four-year structure, 175, 50, 25. The estimated tax abatement amount would be 65,000, and that would be on the increased value only. In other words, they're not getting a break on value which already exists, just on new value that they create.
Is that value based off of the 2023 tax appraisal number, or the 2022 tax appraisal number, or the purchase price?
These would be based on the estimated value of improvements, so the existing value would not come into play.
The purchase price is not inclusive in this request?
Yes, ma'am, exactly. It would only be when they go in and improve the facility and it increases value, or they add equipment which increases the value, that's what the abatement would be.
How do we determine the increase in value? Because appraisal district, in fact, very seldom walks inside a building or knows what improvements have been made, so based off of that, how do we know what the improvements are and what will be the documents that are used to determine, quote, "those improvements"?
Well, our estimates are based on their, they have to estimate those amounts for their financing, and so they estimate some improvements to buildings and some equipment and because they're going to have to pay. And it's based on their costs, and they're going to have to pay for that. And so... And so that's what these calculations are based on. But ultimately, we would abate on amounts above a certain floor amount, which would be the existing values. Value of the improvements, they would also remit estimated value for personal property that they install in the building also. So those, those marginal amounts are what we're considering abating.
And so the total tax abatement is for the combined four years?
Yes ma'am.
Not a singular year?
Yes ma'am, that's correct. 100% the first year, 75 the second, 50 the third and 25 the fourth. And then, of course, the full, full amount would be taxable.
The last line, I don't, I think I asked a question before we got to that line.
Return on investment 6.9 years, including all proposed incentives. That's the expected payback period associated with the proposal as it exists. In other words, this is, the break even time is 6.9 years.
Can you give insight into what the building will be used for? And an overview of what one could expect to have happen with these incentives and the proposed use of the building?
The LLC created by the two companies, VGI and Snyder, expect to move into the building but not occupy it entirely. I anticipate that that would mean that they would be open to leasing that space in that facility to other organizations. And I don't have the detail about the improvements that they would make to the building. I've heard talk about a parking lot improvement, but I don't know that for sure. And I think that those final plans rest in their discussions about financing.
So when you take a look at these four-year tax abatement, is that inclusive of improvements that would be made in the floors? And the areas that they will not occupy but will be occupied by others? Or is that inclusive of improvements on all floors, et cetera?
That's a good question. You have me stumped. I would assume that we could not abate that which we do not know. And so we would limit that abatement to the construction and improvement timeframe, if that's important. That's a great, you have me completely stumped on that one. And so I, I think we would have to specify that the, the abatements would be limited to.
Or inclusive of all floors? Or limited to the floors that they occupy?
If you want to open it up to like Mike's Computer Service, that I might become a tenant in there and move equipment in and have to remit that information to the appraisal district and abate that potential tax source. We could discuss that. I'm not sure that that's specific enough to create a contract on. And so.
Well, just, it's a little confusing because if they're not going to occupy the entire building and we're doing tax abatement, we.
Only the improvements they make.
They make. I'm going to open up for further questions from council.
Are there no sliders at the end of? Go back, go back two slides. So this just flipped. I mean, it was just sold at auction, what, a couple of months ago?
Well, it's sold at auction, no, it was sold at auction and was bought by Bill Elliott about two years ago. He's now sold it to these folks.
So Snyder and VGI are buying the building. These, the people we're talking about are buying the building.
Yes sir, they did form a separate LLC and that LLC is going to own the building.
So no, I had a lot of the same questions Brenda did. I mean, you know, we're going to abate and give them a tax abatement, but they still have the opportunity to revenue, I don't know, three, four, five more floors out of this thing. I just want to be fair on this as we go forward. And we need to have our expectations laid out and very clear, you know, what we will abate and what we won't. And if they get future tenants up there, it doesn't really apply to those tenants. We, we'd love to see, and I have used Snyder and VGI personally, I'm fond of both of them, great. But we need to keep this very well defined as we move forward, what we're going to abate and what we're not.
Well, and the next question is, have they completed the purchase of this building? Because that would be the other question asked, is if they have not completed the purchase of this building, are we allowed to give incentives and sign up for incentives if they don't physically own the building yet?
Well, the key here is, no, they have not closed. They're still working that out. This is a recommendation to consider the abatement. This is not an approval of an abatement strategy today. But as they go to complete their financing strategy, knowing whether or not tax abatement on those improvements will make a difference in what they discuss with their bank.
I'm just asking about the legal aspect of approving incentives for a project of which the building's not physically owned by the persons that we are asked to approve these incentives. Teresa?
We would allow all of the conditions to be met before we execute an agreement. We wouldn't just sign an agreement today. So until all of the steps are taken, including there's an abatement process that we would have to go through if that's part of the deal. So it's, nothing is like imminent, like going to happen today. They're just getting your direction to make sure we're on the right road and that they can continue driving down that road.
This is just, as I understand, just a part of their planning process. Excuse me, planning process for their financing for the building and, and part of their bigger business plan. So they're, they're seeking our assistance in expanding their, their business. Mayor, I'd move approval as presented.
Mayor, I have a question. No, Lucy?
Excuse me. On the incentives about the job creations, the 20 full-time employees, are we talking about in so many years? Or what's the timeframe for hiring those people?
It's three years. They must hire and retain. But at some point, I'm not sure if it's three or five, if they have not hired those, they, they become ineligible to receive that incentive.
My other question is, is on the 59 people that are currently employed, are those people from San Angelo? Or are they from another city that are coming in?
I believe they're owned by the VGI and the.
I don't know where their employees live.
But they're currently employed by these two companies is the point. They're just bringing them in underneath one rooftop.
Yeah, and what my question really was, was if they were coming in, were they going to be living here? Were they going to be working from home? I just.
I don't think they would be buying the building if they were going to work at home. Because they're buying office space, real estate. That's my guess.
One other point, the job creation incentives, we pay intereers. You don't get the incentive until you've hired the people.
Okay. Thank you very much. Larry, do you have a question?
I wondered if you have any additional milestones on the capital investment incentive?
We have discussed the possibility that they would be able to request the capital investment incentive as they made the investments. In other words, on a quarterly basis, they could request reimbursement by documenting what expenditures they had created, completed. Whether or not they take advantage of that, I, I can't say. But we talked to them about that option. And I'm sure we will make that part of that final agreement, unless somebody has heartburn with it.
Well, I'm sure that the, of course, I'm not sure of anything because it's not my building or my businesses. But my assumption is making the investment again, they will want to do it as fast as they can to get it up and running because it was a facility not used for their, the same purpose. And so the investments probably have to be made relatively soon in order to operate. But that's, I'm just sta, making a stab at it. I don't know that that's true.
I know that they discussed their interest. Part of the 200,000 had to do with making the cash flow work early in the project.
Yeah.
So Michael, I mean, this looks consistent. My concern here is, is the protection of VGI and Snyder, the LLC, to go through a tax burden. This is consistent with what we've seen with these proposals before and that's fine. But, you know, I have no problem with this tax abatement, Mayor, just because it gives them some protection against what of all, what all of us has experienced the past 90 days. And I think everybody's asked the right questions. I'll go with the second.
Yeah, I think that it's not so much challenging it, but just trying to get the information out and the questions answered, but not necessarily concerned about the proposal. But just trying to be informed. So that is a second.
That was the second by Interim.
And I'm going to accept that second if there are no more questions. Karen, I haven't seen if you've raised your hand or if you had questions or want some more information on this.
No ma'am, no more questions.
Okay, thank you. So with that, we have a motion. We have a second. Do we have public comment?
Good morning, Rock Temple, senior member District Six. Yes, the only question I had was on how the tax abatement was figured. As we all know, like in 2020, Scitel paid $65,000 that year on a value of 2.7 million. The last two years, the value went down to 1.2 million. And so I was trying to figure out how that 65, 55, 9 was figured over the four years.
Well, it's one of the reasons why in asking the question of if the building had physically closed, whether the purchase of the building had closed. Because the tax abatement, is it based off of the purchase price or the improvements made? So I'm assuming the tax abatement is based off of appraised price. And that appraised price must be the last purchase price, not the current purchase price. And so when you give these incentives, are they based off of the last purchase price or the new contract?
Incentives would be based on the increased value associated with the improvements. And so regardless of what they spend, if we estimate.
What they purchase it for.
Exactly. If the value only goes up a small amount, then they only get a small abatement. However, if the value goes up a significant amount as a result of their improvements, then that additional value would.
It goes back to purchase price though. So I mean, let's say they put in an all-new HVAC system. Okay, so that's a big purchase in a building that size. It's a large investment. Separate from, let's say, a increase in valuation based off of a closed contract for purchase of the building. And I think that's the question is, is it on the price of the building that the abatement is figured or simply on the improvements?
This is on the improvements.
That answers that question. Okay. Go ahead, Tommy.
Too, because you used the word estimated. So you, you, you don't know precisely yet. So that's the reason you, you included the word estimated in the presentation, so.
So does the incentive need to be total abatement estimated at? And is the final abatement number? Or let's say the improvements are more significant in cost than anticipated so that the abatement estimate would be higher?
This is not approval of the abatement. This is only concept discussion for the abatement portion. So you, A, you don't have to work that out today. Because we will need to bring you a specific proposal related to the abatement.
Does that answer?
Absolutely.
Everyone's question? Okay, so with that, any further public comment? All right, we'll take a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Karen?
Aye.
Thank you.
Aye.
That, that motion is approved, seven, zero. We will move into item C. Discuss and Consider Adoption of a Resolution Defusing and Calling for Redemption A Portion of the City of San Angelo, Texas Combination Tax and Revenue Certificates of Obligation Series 2016 and Enacting Other Matters Related to the Subject.
Thank you, Mayor. Tina Dersky, Director of Finance. The city is looking at defusing $800,000 worth of outstanding bonds related to the 2016 Street Certificate of Obligation. Those funds will be allocated into an escrow account from the debt service fund's fund balance. And the purpose of this defeasance is so that we can free up monies and make available that amount of money in escrow so that we can work out the Benedetti repurchase agreement. When speaking with our bond counsel and financial advisors, they advised that we could not set up this repurchase agreement unless we had that amount defeasted from our debt service so that it re-characterizes it as kind of general fund dollars rather than debt. That helps us avoid some issues with federal tax law when it comes to tax-exempt bonds.
So to be really clear, what we're asking, if, if we purchased that machine for $800,000 and we had the right to return it.
Right.
Then they were to pay us back for the purchase of that machine?
So I believe the city paid $1.2 million for that machine in 2017, I believe?
2016, I believe.
2016. And so this would be a mechanism whereby the company repurchases the equipment from the city. Yes, ma'am.
And then they would make quarterly payments or annual payments?
Quarterly payments over the course of four years.
Are there questions for Tina? Seeing no questions for Tina, may I have a motion for approval?
I move to approve.
Lucy moves for approval. The second. Tommy, six, seconds that motion. Any public comment? Seeing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you.
With none opposed, that motion passes seven, zero. We will move into item D, An Appeal of the Planning Commission's Action on March 20th, 2023 To Deny An Application For Conditional Use For Short-Term Rental At 3221 Red Bluff Road West. John, you're on.
Thank you. John James, Director of Planning and Development Services. This is a request for a short-term rental. As you probably know, that those can be approved by conditional use, which normally goes to the Planning Commission and it ends there. In this case, it was denied by the commission based on a 3-3 vote. So technically, it didn't receive enough votes for approval. But it was a tie vote, three to three. And so the applicant, based on that denial, has now appealed that to you all. So you all can make the final decision on that appeal. This is an area at the lake. You can see the, the map there, the location. It is RS1 zoning, so single-family zoning in District One. Just a couple of pictures of the home. And as noted in the letter provided to you by the applicants, they plan on making significant upgrades to the home once it becomes a short-term rental, if that is approved. We did send 12 notices out to the surrounding property owners. None responded in favor. We did have two responses in writing in opposition, as well as three additional citizens from the area spoke at the Planning Commission meeting. Staff did recommend approval at the Planning Commission. We still would recommend approval with these three conditions. Those are just standard conditions for getting the proper permits and approvals and inspections of the facility. As I mentioned, the Planning Commission did result in a 3-3 tie. So that was not sufficient to approve it. So council does need to vote whether or not to uphold that denial or to approve the short-term rental. This is just a simple majority. This is not one of those situations that requires a supermajority. So it, just a simple majority vote would suffice.
Back to the slide before this one. Go through all those.
Yeah, the conditions, basically, they have to maintain all the required number of off-street parking for a short-term rental. They have to get a certificate of occupancy. That includes inspections to ensure that they're up to current code on everything. And also a fire inspection, both an initial fire inspection with the certificate of occupancy, but also a recurring annual fire inspection. And that's largely because, you know, you don't have to do that in your own single-family home. But because these are transient guests coming in, sort of like a hotel, then there's that extra inspection required to ensure that it's fa, it's safe from a fire safety perspective. And that has to be done every year. I'll note that you did receive that, that letter from the, from the applicants in, in your packet. They indicated that they have spoken to a number of the neighbors. And in fact, one of those applicants, it's a group of three people that have jointly purchased this. One of the three have moved. One of the three have moved into the house two doors down, and they've indicated that that's partly an intent to help oversee this facility and ensure that it doesn't create problems. I will also note that one of the reasons we recommend most of these short-term rentals that come before the Planning Commission is that these have a mandatory one-year renewal. And so if there are any problems over the coming year, that will be presented to the Planning Commission in one year when this comes up for renewal and could be denied for that renewal.
What happens along the way in terms of, excuse me, a lot of complaints due to the people who stay in this home along the way? Does it take one full year before it can be revoked?
I believe we have a process for revocation, so if there were a significant number of police complaints, code enforcement complaints, staff could bring it back for reconsideration or to consider revoking it prior to that. You also, as a conditional use, you can place whatever conditions you choose on the approval. So although we have not recommended in the past, one option could be to have that be a shorter timeframe, that they would have to come back for renewal. I will note, though, that for a number of these that we've approved in the past, once they get your approval, if they do, they've got this process for certificate of occupancy, fire marshal inspections. They often will have to make some improvements to the property, and in fact, these folks intend to make some improvements. So if, for example, you chose to require them to renew in six months, they might not even be open in six months because of the time it takes to remodel and get those inspections. So I guess that would be my caution. If we make a renewal period too short, we found that these typically don't open for at least three to six months after they get the approval.
I know in the past at Lake Nazworthy that many of the concerns of people who live at the lake, own property at the lake, that too often, these short-term rentals, more people than should be allowed were staying in these, that parking took over the streets, the partying was aggressive and disturbing to the neighborhood. So I don't know if those are the reasons I say that in terms of opposition to it, but I know that the Lake Nazworthy folks have had the greatest concern about short-term rentals. That being said, I'm going to let Tommy ask questions and make comments since it's your district and you've lived through that.
Yes, ma'am, I have. In fact, I see one person here, I believe, who lived through that nightmare, or maybe two, actually. Yeah, three, okay, sorry. That lived through the nightmare on Red Bluff West. John, I do have a couple of questions for you. If this is approved as a conditional use, does that stay with the property, I'll say, in perpetuity? As long as that property, does it have to be continually used or require so much use for it to maintain its status as a conditional use in STR?
It does not. It would continue, it's sort of like rezoning in that it would continue with the property until revoked, or again, in this case, it's only good for a year. So at the end of the year, if they don't seek renewal, then it would go away. So I know one question we've gotten before is, what if they sell it to somebody else? Maybe we trust these guys, but if they then sell it to somebody else and we don't know how they will run it. But again, because of that time limit, you know, worst cases, you know, it would, it'd only be a year, at least for that first year. Subsequent renewals are required every two years. So there is an automatic expiration in a case where problems would come up like that.
Another question, you've mentioned the fire marshal and having to have that inspection. Do we get, do you all seek input from the fire department on these things? I've been out there four or five times, and I don't, I'm not trying to use a word to make it a pun, I guess you could take it that way, but this is a tight neighborhood. Those homes are extremely close together out there. The street is very, I'm going to say narrow. I'm just wondering, has the fire department commented in terms of them having their apparatus, their equipment in there? Do they make comments to you?
They do. The short answer is, from the fire department perspective, they look at this similar to a single-family home. And so they have concerns about getting down this street, but they have concerns about getting down this street for the people who live there. And to them, it's really not that much different, whether it's a short-term rental or a single-family home, they've got to provide the service regardless.
To that point, Tommy, remind us, I know when these were originally approved, there was a minimum road that I thought was attached to the STR, so if the road wasn't X amount of feet wide, they couldn't do an STR. Is that correct or not?
That is correct, although there's been some recent court cases that have basically thrown that out. We're not able to, we're not able to apply that condition anymore. And in fact, I don't remember on this specific one how wide that road is. It may in fact meet that width, I'm not 100% sure. But yeah, that court case basically said, in that respect, you really can't treat it differently than a single-family home. If it's, if it's good enough for a single-family home, it's good enough for a short-term rental.
Mayor, in my opinion, that road is wide enough for one vehicle. If you've got a couple of fire department apparatus out there, equipment out there doing something, it's going to fill the street up quickly with, just with their equipment. Again, I see some of the folks that have lived through this out there, if, Mayor, if it would be okay with the chair, I would like to hear from them to see if they still have this, because I have also watched the Planning Commission meeting several times via YouTube, and they were very strong and passionate in their opposition to this. If they are amenable to speaking again, one way or the other, I would like to hear from the folks that have lived this.
I don't have a problem with that. I want to make just one comment, and that is, you know, we get on a daily basis in our mail, the number of STRs that are being submitted and approved. And, you know, most of us buy a home, live in a neighborhood, so in a neighborhood, you know your neighbors, instead of on a rotating basis, not knowing who your neighbor is. And so I look at it and I go, and this isn't specifically to this property, I'm saying it in a broader, bigger manner, and that is, when do neighborhoods stop being neighborhoods where neighbor knows neighbor? And I just, I just say that, it's obviously a trend that's happening across the country, and you can certainly see in the City of San Angelo, tremendous amount of STRs being approved. So to that point, I'm going to allow those who are in the audience, before a motion is made, to go ahead and come to the microphone and speak. So those who would like to, once again, make sure you state your name. Obviously, you probably live in that district, but say your district anyway.
Morning, council. My name's Mark Priest. I live at 3205 Red Bluff Road West, which is about four houses down from where this house in question is. As council, you brought up many of the points that we as homeowners have dealt with. What's very different about this situation is we've already lived it, okay? And so, yes, STR is in different part of towns, there's different parts of town, there haven't been issues necessarily, but the environment is completely different. This is a dead-end street. All of our driveways face each other. I see these people every day. We share Christmas presents. We just don't feel this is a place for a business. You know, it's just not the kind of environment. With the house that we had next door, we had fifth wheels parked in the front yard. We had tents propped up out in the back. One time, now we even all took pictures, couldn't even get into my own driveway because there were so many people at the, at the lake house. So we, we asked for the consideration here because the scenario is different. This is not like a neighborhood where it's Santa Rita or one of the other places, because it's a dead-end street, it's a very social area. As you mentioned, Tommy, we're all very, very close together. We just feel like in this scenario, it's going to be a party house. Because all of us that have come to you, and even when all the STR details were being worked out, we very, we were very strong in voicing our opinions as neighbors out there at the lake, because we'd already experienced scenarios where it just absolutely gets out of hand. So we asked for your consideration. There's one of the neighbors was not able to come, he's disabled, really difficult for him to get out of his house, but I have his son, a piece of paper as well, that I think you, I would hope you'd taken into consideration. Thank you.
Mark, would you give her copy of that letter, please, or the letter?
Thank you for your time.
I want to bring the microphone down just a bit so we can hear you.
I'm a little short, aren't I? Thank you for your time and for the opportunity to speak. My name is Donna Ferguson. I live next door to the house that you're, that is requesting the zoning change. I live at 3217. The house asking for the zoning change is 3221, and I also live next door to the house that operated as a short-term rental for several years. I've been in my home 23 years. And during this time, some of the tenants that rented that home were disrespectful, abusive, inconsiderate, and apathetic. People who stay in STRs at the lake want to invite their friends and family to join them, and many of them disregard the rules totally. They do things at the lake that they wouldn't do anywhere else, especially when alcohol is involved, and alcohol is involved nearly every weekend. They create traffic flow problems for the residents, for trash pickup, for mail carriers, and for emergency vehicles, because those off-road parking spots that they have are in their driveways. But when they invite people in, you see an influx of 10, 15 cars. So there's always extra cars. And you can imagine they generate a lot of trash and litter when enough trash containers are not provided. In our single family, we have one for recycling and one for regular trash pickup. People who rent could care less about recycling. They use it for trash, they put trash in the other one, they put the rest of it on the ground. And with wind and the little critters we have out that way, the residents pick them up, and it blows in our yards, too, and since I'm right there, I get it first. They are, the renters pose a danger to the wildlife in that area with some reckless behavior, and they disregard the dull wake zone. That's something that's a real issue. Personally, I've had to cope with offensive language, loud music, cell phone lights shining in my house, they turned them off when I walked out the door, beer cans being thrown in my yard, smoke from a fire pit that they built, one of the renters while they were there, a potato gun being shot off, which got me out of my house because I thought somebody was shooting a gun, the fireworks being shot toward my house, trespassing, theft, using my dock for their purposes, chasing their unleashed dogs across my property, and parents allowing their children to do things like throw rocks, which kids will do things, but not at my pets, and that was an issue.
I'm going to need for you to wrap up your comments.
Okay. Well, I'm opposed to them for the very simple reason, we have five-foot lot lines out there, and I can sit on my patio and hear what the ones next door to us have to say. Because of lake laws and terrain there, we're all on the hill, and there is open boundary lines all across, and they, the police will be very busy if we have to call somebody, because that was our issue, we didn't call enough. So they'll be very busy on weekends.
Thank you very much.
And this will not alleviate problems, this will only cause them to exist again. I thought I had five minutes, I'm sorry.
That's okay, you're just fine. More public comment, please.
We come to you as the owners of the short-term lease property. In the period of time since this was initially denied, we have had time to do more due diligence in the neighborhood and speak with some of the neighbors, including the ones here today. The big issues we hear are mostly in regards to the property that was just referenced, that is falsely being called a previous short-term rental property, which is the one next to the woman who was just here, the property next to her she's speaking about. A lot of the neighbors did believe that was a short-term rental property because of the events that were taking place there. One of the owners of our group, it is myself personally and my husband, have since purchased that property. We're very excited, we're just about wrapping up the investment and hoping to move in in the next two months. So I speak to you not just as the owners of the property, but also as a tenant on the street, soon-to-be. That house was never a short-term rental property, that was just a very negligent owner who did not care for his neighbors. And I will say, first and foremost, we're excited to take this property over, and we have no intention of being that type of neighbor. We're moving in with our son, and we're looking forward to this being a property that we can continue to raise our family on. With those issues with the large gatherings, we hear absolutely what our neighbors are saying. We did write the letter to you guys, and we'd like to elaborate on some of those measures that we're taking to ensure that this property is not a hindrance to the neighbors. One of the big issues is the parking. A strict part of our contract, our short-term rental contract, will be that off-site parking is not allowed. We've already hired an architect to do a site plan for us, which is what the city's requiring in order to get a permit to add additional parking. That's non-negotiable, we will be adding additional parking as part of the short-term rental property, because we do not want people parking on the street and hindering egress for the residents who live there. Furthermore, we do not want there to be a noise issue. One of the benefits, almost a coincidence, that we are moving onto the street ourselves is that we will know very quickly if there is a noise problem, and we can immediately terminate the short-term rental contract or intervene if needed, because we're so close to the property. On top of that, we are proposing to add a privacy fence as part of our extensive renovations. We will be adding a privacy fence along both sides of the property, along the full length of the property, to ensure that there is no opportunity for the people in the short-term rental to interfere with neighbors on either side. We are doing extensive, extensive improvements to the property to turn this into a luxury property. I know you've seen the picture of what it looks like now. We are of the belief that the nightly rate alone will deter some of the type of partygoers that a lot of the residents in the neighborhood are wary of, and that is absolutely our intention. We do not intend for this to be a college hangout spot, if you will. We want this for a place to be families can come, spend time together, spend time with their family, get to see a beautiful part of San Angelo, which is the lake, and interact with, with the lake from this beautiful property. It is not our intention, I promise, as someone moving next door to it, to have this be a property that is going to be a party area. Would either of you like to add something?
We're also going to be, we're also going to be adding-
Your name, sir.
I'm sorry, Louis Murano, I'm also one of the owners. We're also thinking about adding decibel meters that'll alert us if the noise levels do get too loud, so we can go over there, like they said, they live right next door. We'd be able to go over there, address the issue, call them right away, and let them know, hey, things are getting a little too rowdy, let's keep it down. You know, I know a couple of the neighbors that are on the street, and you know, they're dear friends of mine, so I definitely don't want to disrespect their properties. And, you know, we want to also protect their houses as well as our investments. So that's one thing that we do want to make sure that y'all know and do consider. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Rusty Bartolomel. I'm also a local realtor, as well as a business owner. I'm owner of the Angelo Oil House. This, this is a project that we've, we've put a lot of time and effort into and a whole lot of money. If you think that we're going to allow anyone to come in and be disrespectful to our place with the amount of money we put in, absolutely not. Just want to let you guys know, we are, this is going to be, you know, ran strict, and we do not intend to allow any kind of partying or any kind of activity that would be disruptive to our neighbors. Thank you.
I just want to say thank you again for listening to us today. We're really excited for this opportunity. We're excited for what it means to the city for people to have the opportunity to come in and see different parts of San Angelo and how beautiful it is. We think this is an amazing property for it. We, we see the value in it, and we hope that you guys do as well. So again, thank you for your time today.
Thank you. Please come forward.
Hi there. I'm Troy Jago, 3213 Red Bluff Road West, District 1. Just like other neighbors, I haven't had to live through the long-term rental or short-term rentals nightmares like they have. But just in the short period that we've been there, three years, next to us was a rental. But even with it being a long-term rental, still, people don't respect the properties, trash, out of control, everything. But another thing I wanted to bring up on this is that in the requirements of a short-term rental, there cannot be another short-term rental within 500 feet of said property. Now, I'm, last night, I took the liberty of bringing up Google Maps, and I did a pin drop from the back of my porch to the house, the, the bread and breakfast that is across the way from us, and it's 400 feet. Now, I don't know if that, that 500 feet goes from property line to property line. I'm not sure how they, how they look at that. But that's something to, to look at. The, and that, and my wife looked it up last night, and as of yesterday, that bread and breakfast still shows up on the Copper Top Lighthouse. Bread and breakfast is still in operation. So, that's something to look at when we look at the-
Yes, Tom.
Well, I'm not quite clear. So, you measured from this proposed STR to the bed and breakfast?
Well, I, I measured from my back porch. I took a pin drop from my back porch. There are two houses down from me. And as there, as the land's laid out, it makes a curve. So, that's why I'm saying it needs to be looked at as to exactly how many feet-
So, you didn't measure from STR to STR. You measured from your house?
Yes, sir. Yes.
Okay. Is your house an STR?
No. No, sir. I own the house.
All right. So, I'm just, I'm just trying to figure out. I'm still not clear.
Well, I want to make, I want y'all to make sure that, or we need to make sure that the STRs are not within the 500 feet of each other because we're so close together that if it goes from property line to property line, then it could very well be within that 500 feet.
Let me ask a question. So, John, because of all the things that, yes, ma'am?
Can I clarify what the code says? We address bed and breakfast and short-term rentals separately in our code.
That's what I was just going to ask.
And this, the requirement regarding the 500 feet is the short-term rental may not be located on a lot that's within 500 feet of a lot which another short-term rental is located. Bed and breakfast is separate from that. It's not included in that.
What about Airbnb? Because, you know, today, in today's world, there's bed and breakfast, there's Airbnb, and there's short-term rental. And I'm assuming, without knowing, that the rules and regulations vary, but if you take a street and have a combination of Airbnb, bed and breakfast, and short-term rental, it changes the context of that street, but I'm just making that comment.
I was just going to ask a question.
What was the answer?
Basically, Airbnb is just the, the website that hosts bed and breakfast and short-term rentals. But under our code, you have to be registered to legally operate as either a bed and breakfast or a short-term rental. We do know, and we're, we're in the process of identifying those that are operating illegally. In fact, letters have gone out to those. That, that's why you'll see on this next month's Planning Commission, I think there's 10 or 15 short-term rental requests from those folks who have been operating without the permits and are coming in to get those. But we, we do check the 500-feet distance on all short-term rentals when they come into a plot.
Okay, but that, your comment just brings up my comment in terms of the question. If Airbnb is the website that leases all of these out, and yet, so they lease out Airbnb, I mean, bed and breakfast, and they do short-term rental, but they're the mother up here that does this down here. How are the rules different for bed and breakfast versus short-term rental? Because if it's hosted by the same company or the same box, how is that different?
Most of the rules are the same. In our ordinance, the difference between a bed and breakfast is a bed and breakfast has individual rooms that are rented, so you might have multiple bedrooms rented separately. A short-term rental is when you rent the entire home as one rental. And that's really the only difference in our ordinance.
Yeah. But let me ask you a question on a short-term rental. Does it require that the short-term rental is for a 29- or 30-day lease period, or can someone lease that short-term rental to somebody different every weekend for one month?
I guess I'm not sure if all of the question is-
Okay, so I have a short-term rental, and person one wants it only for the weekend of July 4th. Person two wants it for the next weekend because it's a family reunion. Week three of July, I want to rent it out just because I'm on a honeymoon, and I want it. And week four, I'm going to lease it out to my grandmother and grandfather. Is that a short-term rental? Can that happen? Or is that an Airbnb? Or what is it? Because, again, if the same mother up here is overseeing all of this down here, what's the difference between an Airbnb letting out different rooms versus every weekend, somebody new renting out a house?
That is a short-term rental. If, if there's a rental of an entire house for a period of less than 30 days, that is a short-term rental. And that's what most of the rentals on Airbnb now are. Most of them aren't true bread and breakfasts where they're renting out individual rooms. It's typically whole-house rentals.
Then I'm going to ask a legal question of Teresa before this moves much further. There is a request in my neighborhood, if you will, for a short-term rental, which I will oppose. So, am I really allowed to have an opinion and vote on this one today?
Absolutely, you are. This is completely separate. That'll be a separate decision with a separate application.
I've got three coming up in the next, go wait. But you're talking hypothetical sense?
Yeah, yeah. So, it's just-
I didn't know if it's your grandmother and the wedding and all the honeymoon stuff. Didn't know where you were going with that, Brandon.
Well, I just, because, again, we say there's different rules for Airbnb, but yet, you could approach the house as one room logically and rent it out to four different people in one month. And so, and you could rent out an Airbnb for a wedding party and have every room rented out for various parties in the wedding party. And so, legitimately, the Airbnb would be one party, every room, for one weekend or one week.
I'm with you. And I want some, I have some questions to John when he, when he finishes.
Please. John, come back up. Okay, finish. I'm sorry.
I just got one more thing to say, and that's they-
Your time will start over because I interrupted. My apologies. But you brought up an interesting point.
But they also mentioned putting up a privacy fence down both sides of the property. I know there are regulations or rules or whatever against fences over four feet, or anything, anything built over four feet high obstructing the view of the lake from the neighbors. So, that's something else that'd be looked at as well. Thank you.
Thank you for allowing us to interrupt and ask questions. Please come forward. Didn't you want, then?
No.
Okay.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Daniel Gossett, 3225 Red Bluff West. I am right next to it as well. I lived the horror earlier. I am very passionate. I'm very heated about this. I tried to raise my young daughters next to this the first time. They are now teenage daughters. Anyone up here, sitting, that says that they'll have an STR next door to them, is lying or has not lived it. I have. I've had horror stories. I do not want to relive this. If I do, it's just going to be ugly again. They're adding on to the back of this. The garage is converted. How many people do they think are going to house and be civil? The street is not wide enough. We are too close to the lighthouse, measured from the STR that they want to. No one here is, is confused that this used to be an STR. We all know which one the STR was. This is a new STR property, not two houses down from me, next door to me. I vented my frustration at the planning committee. They denied it. They said there it was going to take six months or a year. Now, we're here two months later. It was on the docket last month. How does this happen? I thought we had six months or a year before they could even appeal. Now, we're appealing. I run a mechanic shop. I can't put a mechanic shop at my house. You can't put a hotel in a neighborhood. It has gotten crazy, supposed to be case by case. We can't compare it to the others you approved. This one is on a short cul-de-sac street. No one here wants it. We do not like hotels in our neighborhood. When I leave town to go volunteer my time, who is protecting my family with all these vagabonds that come in? Because when they rent this house, it's like all the Airbnbs. They will rent it, split it between people, come and take over. And that's fine at a hotel or even a resort. This is not a resort. This is a neighborhood. We are very tight-knit. We are very secure in what we want, in that we want a neighborhood to raise our families, not battle this all the time. These additions going up, that's all just to make more money and pack more people in, up occupancy. What's the max occupancy? Like, I have lots of questions. And the fencing, you can't put a fence up, a privacy fence, to guard us from anything. I'm right next door. I mean, it is tight. You can see in the aerial footage. So, the lighthouse is too close. The road is too narrow. We are very frustrated. I am very frustrated because, I mean, I've walked out my door. My daughter's saying, who's on our dock? I don't know. I'll walk down there. Hey, what are you guys doing? Well, we're just fishing off the dock. You want us to leave? And I was like, well, you kind of rented the place a couple houses down. Don't you want to go over there? Well, I just thought this was for everybody. What are you going to do about it? When my young daughter is next to me, that is a very frustrating situation for me. Luckily, she was there because you can't come to my property and threaten me like that. And it will happen again. I walk out front. Somebody's stealing my firewood. Man, what are you doing? That's my firewood. I thought this is for everybody. No, your house is down there. This is my house. If you want something from me, you ask me for it. I'll give you a shirt off my back. But don't take something from me, and don't threaten my kid, my, my family. So, this is threatening my family again.
Thank you very much. Further public comment? I've only allowed each person to talk one time at the microphone. You can visit with him back there if you want to. The next person.
Hello, Ken Taylor, 2810 Red Bluff Road. I'm also the current, like now is really HOA president. I know that we have several people from the neighborhood who are here because they've received letters, and they know exactly what's going on. But I can assure you that this is an issue that all of our residents at the lake watch this because we deal with it in multiple areas. Mayor Gunter, to your point, you were asking about how STRs are structured different from Airbnbs versus, anyways, where you were going with that is 100% correct. We are aware of properties on the lake that are rented out by groups of people, and then they timeshare them. And that's how they circumvent the rules of short-term rentals and Airbnbs. So, we watch this very closely. We would just like to appeal to y'all that we are a neighborhood. There are residential areas of the lake, and there are commercial areas of the lake. There are places on the lake where you can rent RV spots, or cabins, or other things if you want to come in for the weekend. And we're fine with that being in those commercial locations. Please leave our neighborhoods alone. Allow us to be at home when we're at home. It is very much a hotel setting when you bring an Airbnb into a, a particular spot. None of us want to go outside and wonder who's next door, especially when we have children, young daughters. I don't think we have to elaborate on any of that. Y'all understand what the situation is. There are several rules that were put in place to dictate where Airbnbs and short-term rentals can go. Whether or not court cases have said that those stand or don't stand, we're talking about going against those rules. Why did we make those rules if we're going to allow STRs to go in where we said they can't be, whether it be because of distancing or because of the streets? There are a lot of issues here, and it does not fit this space. So, we would encourage y'all to stand up with the ruling that was given by the council first time around. Thank you.
Thank you. Further public comment? Tom, might be a good time for you to, you said you had some questions. So, go ahead.
Yeah, John?
Karen, I'll then come to you if you have any questions after Tom is through with his, if you have any. So, if you'll just be on guard with your questions.
John, do you have a brief idea? How many STRs are around the lake? I mean, is there 20? Is there 10? How many STRs are on the lake?
I don't have that. We have a map of them in the office, but I, I don't know off the top of my head.
Well, and, okay. So, I am, and I'll kind of tell where I'm going. John, we're good. I'm just going to make a statement on this. I'm a VRBO Airbnb user. I use it when I go out of town. I'm one of those vagabonds that do show up. But I will tell you this much, we're very respectful what happens. And those offer alternatives to hotels when you're traveling with elderly or traveling with pets and do things like that. Where we mostly do those are in much larger cities than this. I came into this heavily cited that, you know, I'm a VBR STR. There are some in my district. There are some that are going to come in and up with this same thing in the next couple of weeks. But I will tell you, I will agree with Mr. Gossett. These things need to be on a case-by-case basis. And I, I am not fond of having this one go right where it's at today, just by what his people have talked about today and shown us. And, and I would agree. I mean, I have seen my son and other people go to other lakes and rent a house, and 12 kids end up in a house. All right? And I, I feel bad about that, and I, and I agree with that. It's just my statement on where we'll go with this today.
Karen, do you have comments you would like to make or questions you'd like to ask at this point?
I would like to say that I think it's been an excellent discussion. All the points that I might have been interested in making or questions that I might have asked have been, have been brought forward already. The single thing that perhaps has not been discussed, and it's only relevant because we have more of this coming forward, as everyone's pointed out in the next few weeks, is the revocation process. So, slightly separate from this, but also related, it might be worthwhile to spend a minute to have the appropriate person explain to us how that's actually quantified, how complaints are quantified, what constitutes enough to shut down a short-term rental if it is approved, and then it's found to be unacceptable under the circumstances. I would like to hear that myself.
John, you want to answer her questions?
Well, the, the short answer on what is enough is it's up to the Planning Commission and you all. When, either when a renewal comes back to you or a possible revocation comes back to you, you would hear the input from neighbors. You would, you would see the list of complaints to code enforcement, police, any other similar types of complaints. One thing we do with any renewal is we check with fire, police, code enforcement, to see what complaints have been offered on a particular property. So, there's no magic number of how many complaints get you to that point, but it would be a discretionary decision on either whether to revoke or whether or not to renew a short-term rental. And it would, all that evidence would be presented initially to the Planning Commission, but then it could be appealed to you all.
Does that answer your question, Karen?
I think so. So, it, from what you've said throughout the course of this, this dialogue is that we can infer that the proper course of action to file a complaint includes reporting directly to the police department, possibly the fire department, code enforcement, and then being present and lodging your complaint in person when renewal is up. So, when, when renewal, when a property is reviewed for renewal, is that something that, then, the same procedure is followed? In other words, the same notifications are sent out to the neighbors the second time to alert them that the renewal is on the docket, on the agenda for the Planning Commission?
That, that's correct. It follows the same process, same notifications to the surrounding property owners.
Lucy?
Okay.
Thank you, Karen.
Yes, John. My question is, did this STR meet the requirements, the criteria that we have down for STRs?
Well, yes. It meets the minimum requirements. Otherwise, it wouldn't have come forward in the process. But as with any conditional use, it's a case-by-case determination for you all based on the context, what's around it, neighbor complaints, all of that sort of thing. So, I, I know we've had some applicants who think, well, I meet the standards, then you, you've got to approve it. And, and that's not true. It is a discretionary decision by you all.
You know, Teresa, because this came up earlier, do we need to re-review the short-term rental thing, for example? Because originally, it was written with the statement concerning width of street, and the street had to be so wide in order to be approved. And now, we find that there's been a change in policy or, or legal approach to that. Are there other things that- Are there other things that have come up that also invalidate the actual short-term rental that we use or that was written and approved?
Not yet. The only thing that we have seen come through so far is that 30 feet in width for the streets. But this is a very hot area of litigation in bigger cities, in Austin, in Plano, those sorts of cities. And so we're going to get some differing opinions based out of different courts, and it's going to take appeals to figure out actually what the rules for STRs are. It's up to you if you want to bring it back. You know, I think, going back to Karen's question, it's kind of a vague statement on revocation that's listed that there to comply with applicable standards may result in revocation of certificate of occupancy. If we did bring it back, I might want to look at that language and tighten that up a little bit as well to make it more clear what kinds of things would be involved in that kind of revocation. But we definitely could clean up the 30-foot width language that's included here.
Just to add on to that, we have had that discussion with the Planning Commission, and in fact, we've talked with Brandon and Teresa's office about some possible changes and identified those. Part of the reason we've been holding off is to wait on some of these court cases, but also the legislative session just ended, and there were a couple of short-term rental bills that were being considered. I think they all failed. We'll double-check that. But we do have plans to bring back some changes to that.
My concern on having plans to bring back is the following. I have a stack of short-term rentals this thick in my mailbox for requests for approvals. Do we move forward, knowing that the language might change in terms of what is or isn't applicable or qualifying underneath these new rules? Because I'm shocked at the number of cases.
And I do believe that's directly related to the audit that's going on, and people are realizing that we are finding them when they didn't think we could. So that is part of that. Those places haven't operating in the city the whole time. I'm not overly concerned that our ordinance is not enforceable at this point, with the exception of that 30-foot wide distance. And we've just been waiving that requirement when it comes up, which I think has only been once. So it's completely at your discretion. I don't see any reason why we can't process those unless there's just a policy difference that you guys have regarding STRs in general. I'll tell you, total bans are not popular with the courts. So that's probably not the direction you want to go, but it's completely up to you how you want to handle it.
Teresa, is it possible if they look at the work that's due? Is there a policy?
In there that gives the council the authority to look at that within six months or something in certain circumstances?
Well, I think the issue is being a lake property. Certainly, the lake properties have a seasonality that short-term rentals in other neighborhoods don't have a seasonality as the lake does. So that's the other issue here. Now, who else has questions or comments to make?
I have a comment.
Go ahead, Lucy.
I was going to say, I'm also a person that rents an Airbnb, and I am very respectful when I go to that Airbnb. The people that are renting it also has a list. You walk in, and it's got a list of things you can and cannot do. So for that alone, you're very aware. The parking and all that stuff, y'all seem to have taken care of that. You also have come across like, hey, we're doing the very best we can. You're going to be two doors down. How many people would love to be able to do an STR and just be right down the street? And when they see anything happening, you got to just run down there and take care of it. The other part of it is that I'm also, I tend to feel for those people that have to put up with that. It's not any different than myself. When I'm at home and my neighbor's having a party and they're allowed, their cars are all along the side of the road, the trash is overbearing. It's not just at the STRs. It is practically all over town, and there's nothing we can do. And you don't want to get your neighbor upset because then it starts off. So you kind of like wait it out and move on. But all I'm saying is that I would like to see this approved for the mere fact that I love for people to come in from out of town and see our lake and enjoy it and come back. And I would tell you that probably for the most part, it is not these big parties that we're talking about. It is probably families that are three, four, six, that are just going to enjoy a weekend. And that's my belief. That's what I think. So with that, I would approve.
Mayor, I'll make a motion. I make a motion that we deny the appeal and uphold the Planning Commission's denial.
So is there...
I can't. Didn't deny it, it was a tie.
It wasn't denied, it was 3-3, so it was a tie. But if you want to...
That is a denial.
It is denial because it didn't get a majority. So it is a denial. And I think Karen just seconded that, did she?
I did.
All right. So we've had a lot of public comment, but our typical procedure is a motion, a second, and then an opportunity for public comment. So I'm going to open the floor for further public comment now that there's an actual motion on the floor for denial.
Steve Hampton, District 5, San Angelo. I would, it's good to see you again.
Welcome back.
And Lucy's asking questions. I like that. I love that. And I have comment that I think the tie goes to the runner and is a good way to approach it and that what you've decided in your motion is good. I also agree with the mayor that this needs to be reevaluated. There are similarities between the bed and breakfast and the short-term rentals that need to be reevaluated from what she mentioned. I also think that there needs to be a commercial designated area for these things to be in. And we might recommend to the family on that block that they get an HOA going to keep these kind of things from penetrating into their area. So thank you.
Further public comment? I'm assuming, Teresa, that if they made a public comment earlier and now it's open for public comment, they could come back and speak and still live within our rules or not?
Generally, we interpret it as on one item, but you run the meeting, Mayor, so if you want to allow that, then that's fine.
I know there's at least one person who would like to... Or maybe two, who would like to make further public comment.
Ken Taylor, I apologize. When I was up earlier, I meant to also clarify, as the neighbor said, they are aware of the building restrictions out there, and they cannot build a privacy fence all the way down both sides of the property. So if that's part of their plan to control and overview this property, that's outside our restrictions. You can't do that. Our lakefronts must maintain lower than a four-foot fence, clear to your neighbors. So trying to say that you can keep everything controlled within that lot is not really a clear answer. So thank you.
I have a question.
Yes, Larry, go ahead.
It seems as though...
Mr. Taylor, did you want to ask him?
Mr. Hampton indicated that they should form up an HOA, but I thought you identified yourself.
Yes, we do have an HOA in place, and it does cover all of the owned lake lots and some of the leased lots. They have that option to be a part of our HOA. But yes, it is in place, and we are about 525 members strong.
But the homeowners association doesn't override an ordinance. So you can have a homeowner's, but it can't control STR because by policy, STRs can exist in the city. So they don't override that, correct?
Well, we don't enforce that. They would have to enforce that themselves. If they passed rules that prohibited some of this activity, then they would be the enforcement body that would have to take care of that, which is not as effective as the city coming in and doing it. But they have rules out there that we do not have.
And we feel that we have good representation from the city, and we appreciate y'all monitoring this for us. And we have not taken that step to try and ban it ourselves because it has not been that big of an issue yet. Thank you.
Okay.
Just wanted to clarify one thing for y'all. The people that bought the house next to me that wants to have the STR did not buy the house on the other side of me. I have another neighbor that did. They bought the house further over, and they have not, they are not living there at present. They are working on it. So I just want you to know that they can't keep people from doing things because they're there, because they're not.
Further public comment? All right. With that, then, we have a motion on the floor to deny the approval of the short-term rental at 3221 Red Bluff Road West. So I'm going to start with Karen, your vote.
Can I make a second?
Oh, wait a minute. I thought I had a second. Karen seconded.
Karen's seconded.
Yeah, so your vote?
Motion to deny. My vote is to deny.
One. Larry?
Vote to deny.
Lucy?
Vote to approve.
Harry?
Vote to deny.
Tom?
Deny.
Tommy?
Vote to deny.
Mayor Gunter, vote to deny. Motion to deny the approval of the STR at 3221 has been approved at a vote of 6 to 1. We'll move on to Item E, First Reading and Public Hearing of an Ordinance Amending Appendix A, Article A8.000, Subsection A8.002, Monthly Water Rates, Sanitary Sewer Discharge Charges, Industrial Waste Charges, Sewer Tap Charges. And Shane, you're on.
All right, Mayor, Council. If y'all will remember, back several months ago, we came to y'all for a meter replacement program to start with the city. And so we've started that process, but in that, we've got some really long lead times. And so on these...
There she is.
Hello.
She finally came online. You're full screen, Karen.
Yeah. Karen, be careful. You're full screen.
Tell people in the background that you're on.
And, but, and so in the lead time coming up on the lead times on these, we're starting to see quite a few of our meters fail throughout the system. And so currently, we do not have, within our ordinance, any means to collect on these meters that are, they're going bad, they're breaking, things like that. And so we're looking at amending our ordinance, current ordinance that we have to actually be able to go back and charge or create charges for these meters. And so they're dead, these dying meters. So with this, we will look at going back and averaging the last three months of active usage, or if they've had the meter long enough, going all the way back to the previous year or so, and looking in at that direction. So any questions concerning that?
So let's be clear. Okay, so my meter's dead.
Yes, ma'am.
So basically, all I've been charged is the minimum amount allowable, the basic rate. But I've been using water for three months, including filling my pool up.
Yes, ma'am.
And yet, I'm only paying the basic rate. And because we do not have an ordinance in play that allows us to average the water usage from previous months or years, we cannot charge that person for the use of the water because the ordinance in play does not exist. Is that clear?
Correct. It does not exist. The current ordinance that we have does not have a way for us to recover those losses that were on the meters that are broken or not registering. So we don't have, we don't have any way to collect or charge for that. And so this ordinance will allow that. It'll allow us to go back and establish rates based on previous, either the last three active months, previous usage, and/or if they've had an established service long enough, we can go back an entire year or two years, look at that same period, and charge them at that, at those, based on the average of those rates. And so that way allows to recover some of these lost revenues that we're seeing. We're averaging right now currently approximately $25,000 a month in lost revenue based on our existing dead meters. We're hoping to have meters coming in in the replacement program, hopefully by this fall. We're seeing a 10- to 14-month lead time on meters, and so that industry just has never recovered from the COVID and how far behind they got, especially on the 5/8s, which we're really seeing our meters, those are the ones, the majority of them, the households that have them. So those are the majority of our meters that we're seeing failing. And so again, right now, we're losing about $25,000 a month in revenue. And so this is a way, this amendment will allow us to be able to start recovering those funds that we're losing right now or currently not able to collect on.
Do I have questions? Tom?
Oh, huge. So are we talking about a meter? We're replacing a meter and charging them for the meter? Are we talking about a rate?
No. This, basically, this, we're not, we're in a meter replacement program. And so as we get the meters in, we go out and we replace the meters. And there's no charge for replacing the meters. It's just, however, right now, a lot of the meters that we have already out there, they're dying or dead. They're getting old or end of life, basically. And so when we get to that point, it just, it's just sitting there because we don't have any meters to replace it with. We're waiting on...
They're not being charged for water usage.
So yeah. So any water that's...
Any charges at all?
Just a base.
Minimum charge.
Yeah, just the base fee. And so with all the water passing through, we can't register it. And with our existing ordinance, if we can't register the water, we're not, we're not able to charge for it. With this, we'll be able to, with this amendment, we will be able to estimate, based on the prior three months' usage and/or if they've had a service long enough, we can use the same period of time, the prior year, to estimate, get that estimate for amount of water, an estimate of water usage at the residence or wherever that dead meter is. And we'll use that to calculate for the charge that we would charge moving forward.
I'm good with all that, but what if you're, what if, say, you're a renter or somebody rents a lot of homes, and you have homes that are not being used? And so it's not being used right now, or hadn't been used for three months, but it was used a year ago for three months. How do we solve that?
If, again, we will, we'll do our best to work through if it's not being, of course, if they're not using it, using the meter and they don't want to charge, and they're not using the water, then they can always have the meter disconnected, and we can look at it from there and try to reestablish it. But again, we will do our best to work with each individual customer to establish, to establish some rate in there that they feel is reasonable.
Lucy?
Shane, are these dead meters residential or commercial or what?
Majority of, most of both. The majority of them are residential, and those are, and they're the 5/8s meters, which we are having the longest lead time to receive because those are, and this isn't, this isn't an issue related just to the city of San Angelo. This is all over the country. And so we are seeing these, I mean, we're seeing it across the country. And so everybody wants 5/8s meters, and we're all, we're all clamoring for them. And so we're, again, we're trying to get them as fast as we can. But the majority of them are residential. You are correct.
And my next question is, do we know where they're located in San Angelo? Where these dead meters are? We are aware where they're at?
Yes, yes. We are aware of those. So, yes, ma'am.
You know, because it's a shame that we have lost $167,200 up to date when water is such a precious commodity, and there's no way of having this money back into the fund that we needed in to use. So I'm glad that we're, I know that it's not our fault that these meters are not being replaced soon enough, but it would be nice to know that as soon as we do get them, we don't leave them in storage for a while.
No, ma'am. That's, they will be, these dead meters will be prioritized. As soon as we get these meters in that can be replaced, these meters, these dead meters will be prioritized to have, be first on the list for replacement.
And I would also like to know, do these, do these residents, are they aware that they were just being charged the basic minimum? Or do they not even know that their meter doesn't work?
I would, I can't speak for everyone, but I know that...
Ignorance is bliss, right? So...
I know that, I know that there, I know that a few of them are aware of it, but again, I'm not sure if all customers are aware of it.
I know mine works.
I would think that when you're, I would think if you normally have an $80 or $100 water bill and it goes to 20, you would probably notice. But again...
Thank you, Shane. Other questions for Shane?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, Larry?
The question of rent properties.
Yes, sir.
At least in my mind, if they've, if they're, they've had the meter turned off, that they shouldn't have to pay for that first tier of water. But if that meter is on, then they're responsible for that amount, no matter whether they use it or they don't, the water is turned on. Is that correct?
Well, you have a basic fee. So let's say it's $80 a month, every month, for the 20 years you've owned that house. But last year, you watered your lawn, and so your bill went up to $200. But last year, you watered your lawn, and so your bill went up to $200, and then all of a sudden, it went down to $25. Your assumption would be something's wrong with the meter. I mean, you have to know, you have to know when you're not paying for water, but...
I would think, when you start looking at an STR rental type situation where, you know, the property, the actual property owners, it's in their name paying the bill every month, and it, whether they rent it or not, depends on the amount of water usage, that's a little different situation than a typical lease or renter situation that actually is living in that property month after month. And most of the time, in that case, the water meter is in the renter's name, not the property owner's name. And so we would base, we would, again, work with whoever the renter of that house is to establish their base that they've been using, and so, and then estimate that charge based on their usage.
It's going to be hard to be 100%. I mean, it's...
It will be hard, especially...
It's going to be hard to be 100%, but we got to start somewhere, and certainly every homeowner would have the opportunity to have a conversation with someone in our water department about the water charge, right?
About the charge, correct.
So you're not, it's not going to be without an opportunity to talk.
Correct. Yes. No, if they get the bill and they don't believe that they are utilizing that much water or there's some issue with that bill, they come in with, you know, our customer service folks and sit down, we'll work through all the numbers with them and show them, you know, where we based our averages on, and then again, just work with those individuals to establish some estimate that they believe would be correct and us as well.
Larry, does that answer your question?
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Okay. Other questions, comments? Then may I have a motion?
I'll move.
So moved by Harry, a second by Lucy. Oh, sorry. Now you, we have a motion and a second, so now you can come forward to make public comments, sir. You're hard to see behind him.
My name's Jamal Shumpert, single member District 2. I actually was affected by this water meter situation, in which I took about eight months arguing back and forth with the city water department about that very situation. When my water meter failed, it charged me up to 27,000 gallons and only used about 3,000 to 5,000 gallons a month. So as it stated for him, we don't know when it fails, and when we tell y'all it fails, y'all argue against us, and that only adds charges. So I don't know how they could rectify the situation, I mean, rectify the situation or find out if water meters aren't working. He said that you, when you asked him a question, he said that they do know where the water meters are that aren't working. Well, in my case, I sat there for about seven months being overcharged by the city with a non-working water meter. So I'd like to beg to differ on that, about whether y'all know where they are or not.
I know, for example, when I've had, I've had the water department call me saying, your usage, Brenda, is way up, your X amount of usage is up now. You either can hire a plumber to come and check to see if you have a water leak, and if you have that water leak repaired, then they work with you to reduce your bill because you can prove up there was a water leak and a plumber came and they fixed it. So it's not just simply sometimes a water meter, it's a line break, et cetera. So it gets a little more complicated, but I think your comment is well-received, and we understand what you're saying.
Actually, to add to yours, it was a city sewer leak, and I was arguing about water meter.
Yeah, sorry.
It was a city main water line leak that actually caused, I think, the problem for the water meter to go up to 25,000, and it wasn't a leak on our side. And I had to argue with the city for months over that leak. We didn't find out the water meter was broken until after they fixed the leak, months well later. I mean, months...
Good comment. Thank you for sharing.
All right, thank you. And we do, every now and then, there will be a malfunctioning meter where we do get readings that could be incorrect, and that's different than what we're talking about here. We're talking about a dead meter that is registering absolutely no flow, and so, and which is different from the gentleman that was just here, to where he was, his meter registered excessively more than what his normal usage would be. In most cases, we do see that with leaks and things like that in those situations. And so, but again, that's not what we're addressing here. This is just for dead meters that is actually registering absolutely no flow. This, that's what we're talking about here.
Okay, further questions?
I just have one. Did you mention how many meters we have that are not, that are dead meters or not registered?
Currently, right now, dead meters that are not registering, a little over 450 currently.
Like a lot.
It's a substantial number, and we're seeing them, again, start to fail more rapidly as they're getting age on them, so...
I think the question in the back of all of our minds is, why did it take, get to 450 before we addressed the ordinance as a major issue? And where were we last year in trying to identify this and create change so it could be corrected?
We're working on it, and again, have been working on this, trying to get the program in place to get it going and getting, again, getting these ordered. We're, again, we're working, trying to work with our vendors to get these meters in as soon as possible. If we can take, you know, even if they get a partial shipment or things like that, they're trying to send them to us. And so we're hoping to get these in as soon as possible. And it has been a struggle for us for the last year or two on these meters, especially with all the new construction, things like that, making sure that we have enough meters for new construction, as well as trying to weigh new construction versus a dead meter as to where that priority lies. So it's been, it's been a challenge for us, but we're moving forward. We do have a large order, working with our local vendor for them to, also, they've ordered stock supplies, so hopefully if we do see, in our replacement program, we do see a meter or something go down, a new meter go down, and we're waiting for our next order, big order, that they'll have some available for us to purchase locally as well.
Further questions?
Before it gets lost, can you work with that gentleman back there to see if we can come up a reasonable agreement between the city and him on his water usage, such as it was?
Yes, sir. I'll make sure that the issue's been resolved.
Thank you.
Lucy, you had your hand up first.
Shane, I was just wanting to ask you quickly. You mentioned that you have ordered these meters. Do we know when they're supposed to arrive or even a...
The 5/8s meter, of course, we've ordered multiple sizes, and they're coming in anytime from within the next 30 days all the way through, but the timeline for the 5/8s meters that they're estimating now is sometime in that October timeframe.
Further questions, comments? Then remind me, do we have a motion on the floor? We have a motion and a second.
A motion, Lucy seconded.
And we've had public comment now, so with that, we'll take a vote. Karen?
Uh...
Yea or nay? Approving?
Approved, absolutely. Thank you. Sorry.
Okay. Larry?
Yes.
Lucy?
Approve.
Harry?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Mayor Gunner?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0. We will now move into closed session. The... Oh, I didn't know that. So there's no closed session. So we will do the follow-up and administrative issues. Are there any? Seeing none, we'll go into approving various board nominations. We'll start with the Concho River Water Master Advisory Committee, Shane Kelton, to an unexpired term ending January 2025. The Design and Historic Review Commission, Donna Crisp, SMD 5, to an unexpired term ending September 2023. And the Planning Commission, Michelle Miller, SMD 6, to an unexpired term ending January 2024. May I have a motion for approval?
May I have your approval?
A motion by Lucy, a second, second by Tommy. Any public comment on the items, the various board nominations as just listed? All right. Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All people are approved, 7-0. Announcements and consideration of future agenda items. Let me just make one announcement that will be at our June 20th meeting, and that is, I have asked that the president and CEO of Portus de Plains actually come and make a presentation to the full council, and it'll allow you an opportunity to ask questions or make comments. So Lauren will be here for the July, June 20th meeting. Okay? That will be on the agenda. May I have a motion for adjournment?
I'll move.
Second.
All of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The pass is 7-0.